Sorry for being late. It's Thursday, January 26. This is the Situate Planning Board hearing. We have an agenda.
Move the agenda?
All in favor.
Okay.
First item on the agenda is continue public hearing for 91 Humrock Beach. I understand we have a request to continue it.
Yeah, we do. And we have the motion. Motion, please. It says move to...
Move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for 91 Humrock Beach until February 9, 2017 at 8:00 p.m. And to extend the time to file the decision until February 28, 2017.
You have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was quick. Saved themselves 45 minutes.
Saved themselves five more if you'd signed it.
Let's see. Potential bylaw changes for the purpose of the April 26 annual town meeting.
Want me to talk to them?
Yeah, why don't you give us the initial briefing here?
Okay. Well, Tricia and I had, I had had some correspondence from Tricia that sounded like she was very eager to get a couple of articles on the warrant for April. Even though the official time for the warrant being opened and closed has passed, you can usually get articles onto the special town meeting in the annual town meeting way later. So I had assumed that that's what she wanted to do and then, you know, started the wheels turning and getting things on the planning board agenda, getting things drafted and so on, only to have new correspondents that said, "No, we're not, we're not going to do that. We're not going to do things that late." Which makes total sense and is a very good idea. I don't like to rush around and, you know, have things going on at the last minute. But just for informational purposes, I think, well, they're somewhat different articles. There's the recreational use of marijuana, which other towns are beginning to look at temporary moratoriums on, moratoria. They're looking at moratoria on having, having recreational sales outlets for marijuana.
Temporary tied into but...
It's more or less tied into the state's deadlines for finishing, you know, their new rules. There's going to be a cannabis control board. They have to promulgate rules and talk about all the mechanics of how it's going to be regulated after that. So that was one. The other one had to do with regulating the sizes of signs for public buildings. Right now, for public buildings that are in residential zoning district, which is all of the new ones that we're talking about, they can only have an eight-square-foot sign. And the way it sounds, you know, when you read the bylaw, it's pretty straightforward. They can really only have one sign. So they can have one sign, but they can't have, you know, letters on the building or anything like that. And when you think about it, the town library didn't have, it didn't say Situate Town Library on the building. You just went there, you knew it was a library, you used it.
And a quarter would be outside.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm, I'm talking about. The letters actually, yeah, it had that. So, so it had, it had enough signs. So that part is still a little bit iffy under the zoning bylaw. But the size of the signs, I talked to the consultant for the library who's with their architects, who's working on the signs, and he thinks the eight-square feet is going to be fine. He said they'll fit what they need into that. And actually, our sign design person has already designed it with the logo and the lighthouse and all that. And I think the public safety building will also have one of these. They'll have something with lights and changeable information that tells you when you have to evacuate Situate Harbor and, you know, when you have to do anything that you need to do to take care of your property if there's any kind of a storm or danger or threat. So there'll be information that changes in some kind of a sign that I think is going to be internally illuminated, which is also not something the bylaw really wants you to have. But this is a public safety sign, so it's really a little bit different. So that's where we are with this article.
So we're sort of pushing these off to the next town meeting if we're going to address them at all?
Yeah, I think the one we push off would be the marijuana moratorium.
And the sign, what you're suggesting is there might not be a need to change the sign by law?
I think it could be, it could probably be left alone, or if anything happens to it, you just go up to two signs for each public building. You know, allow a sign identifying the building to be on the building itself.
Okay. All right, so we'll put all that aside for now. Sounds good. All right. Good line. Lot to old business, et cetera. Surety return for Aquana Pass?
Yes, Mike Hayes, I represent Doug Sharon, who did the work on the...
Could you, can you...
Can you hear me? Is it okay?
I just want to make sure that the microphone can pick us there. Maybe Karen can move it over.
Thank you, Karen.
There you go.
So, Mike Hayes, I represent Doug Sharon, who was asked for the return of his surety. Doug is the owner of two lots that are, he's building spec houses on. One of the houses has been sold that he didn't construct. Amory, the consultant Amory, and Pat Brennan was out there at the completion of the road and filed his completion report. It was a difficult winter out there with heavy fall and winter with heavy machinery going in and out in there. The road was in pretty tough shape, but it has been fixed up as of today. And I sent into Laura this afternoon a photograph of that. And we believe that all of the requirements of the planning board from October of 2015 have been, have been met and would respectfully request the return of the surety.
How much were we talking about?
Uh, we were $30,000, but actually, I talked to Pat Brennan today, got a couple of things. And he's, you know, when he put everything together, the recommendation that came up, came forward was $26,000.
Release $26,000?
Yeah, and I can kind of explain that if you want me to.
So, release $26,000 and hold...
Hold four.
Hold four, okay.
So the reason for holding the four was there is loaming and seeding, but it still has to be done. This isn't the right season for it. So Pat thought that would be $2,200 for that. There may be a need to put gravel down on top. You know, the whole kind of care to the road changed a bit because of the heavy equipment. They kind of, you know, pushed the, they changed the pitch somewhat, and they also kind of brought up some mud. And it's, it is good right now because it was just graded, I guess, today.
They went out this morning and regraded, yes.
Yeah, so it's looking really good right now, but it would only be about 800 for, you know, a ton truck of gravel, which is what Pat thinks they would need. So, you know, it's just kind of an insurance type of thing to hold that back. And then $1,000 for just general cleanup. So, so it's $2,200 plus 800 plus $1,000.
Okay.
The only thing I'd say, you know, again, respectfully, is that Doug feels that the, you know, they did try and loam, obviously, in the summer and in the fall, but nothing was growing. The loaming seed was not what was involved with the, the planning board's requests. The, you know, it was just basically to build the, the road. So, I mean, I know he would hope that the loaming and seeding surety, or a portion of the surety, would be not, not help, he would hold back that money.
Obviously, the public, I both... Yeah, there's a loaming seed on the cross section, so it's really part of the whole, you know, the whole construction process. It's going to prevent, you know, the gravel from, you know, spreading out.
Fair enough.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
We have a motion.
Move to approve that the planning board released $26,000 to Doug Sharon, representing the surety held to guarantee construction of Aquana Pass. Less than $2,200 for loaming and seeding, 800 for possible gravel top dressing, and $1,000 for cleanup. Made this agreement for the road to also be modified and included requirement for annual grading.
Okay, that was another thing. When I talked to Pat, he recommended that it be graded once a year. It's not, it's not a very deep race. It's just something that, that is good practice for, you know, it's essentially a joke.
No, I understand. And the, my argument on, not argument, but my suggestion on that is that the two lots that Doug bought and then, and then he built the road, he took titles subject to an existing roadway maintenance agreement that he had no part in. And what it does say, though, is that the, all the work in keeping the road in good condition and is, would be done, quote unquote, "as necessary." And he would have no input, frankly, in, in changing that roadway agreement. So it's difficult for him to, to be held to that or to really have any input in, in changing that. The roadway agreement was made by the two parties that owned the surrounding land, and that was put in place before the lots were sold. So he really has no input in that, so. But, you know, it only makes sense. I mean, they're building $900,000 homes up there, and I would be astounded if the, the three new homes and the existing home certainly have an incentive to keep that in good shape. And, and they have the requirement to do it as well, so.
I just was wondering who actually owns the road now?
The road is actually owned by five different entities. The three lot owners, the Brennans, and I can't remember the name of the other people who, who put that roadway maintenance agreement on record. But those five people would be responsible for and, and own and be subject to that agreement and forced to, to keep it, to keep it in good shape.
You know, part of the awareness is kind of, is I did get some complaints out there from the owner of one of the lots. Who I think had just sold the house and was just a little, you know, concerned.
Yeah, because they, I mean, the people that bought, bought eight, was that the first people?
I don't remember if someone connected.
Yeah. And again, it was right before the sale of that house, which was just, I think, about 10 days ago. You know, they had a lot of heavy machinery in there, bringing telephone poles in and that type of stuff. So there was a lot of heavy activity up there and in there. And, you know, I think two of the house, two of the, two out of three of the new houses have been built and one to go, which is that actually unmanned lot. So the, the likelihood of heavy machinery going in there from this point forward, the biggest machinery would be a moving van, you know, at this point. But we'll do what the pleasure of the board is.
Is not an agreement signed by the homeowners?
No, I mean, we've had a copy of it. It's between the Brennans and some people named Donovan, who are still in the other existing house out there. So it's, yeah, I, I thought maybe they, you know, one of them was the owners of the road because they just agreed between themselves that they're going to maintain it.
I put my left hand.
But it doesn't involve the other people. So sometimes when you have one of those kinds of situations, the people that, that aren't paying for it want, you know, want things done a little differently. And then the people that are paying it maybe are not quite as eager to maintain it on a regular basis. So it seemed like a good idea to have something in there, at least just about annual grading. It's not saying they have to bring in gravel. I mean, it's not saying anything too extreme. But I also understand what Mike is saying is that we can't really use the surety to get this out of those other people. So maybe, maybe the planning board can talk about this at a later point and just decide, you know, if there's some other way to address it, particularly if we start getting complaints about it.
Sure. I mean, and...
This is private road, though.
Yes.
Right. So essentially, the signatories to, to this, this maintenance agreement are responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah, just like a common driveway where it's, it's private.
So, you know, if somebody were to ask us, I would say, you know, an annual grading would probably be at least an as-needed basis, so. But it sounds like they're going to have to work it out among themselves.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything we're going to do about it.
Well, it's amazing how it's sort of just everybody's MO to bring the talent to it and have us, you know, "How come you didn't do this? And how come you didn't do that?"
Right.
So that's why sometimes, you know, the impulse from here is to try to get everything worked out at the beginning.
And from the, you know, you look at this property from the road and you would, people would think that it was a small subdivision, but, I mean, these were Land Court lots that had been in existence for, you know, 70 years and with that existing driveway and, but the other thing I'd say is that, and so they would think, oh, the planning board must have, that must be a subdivision, so there must be a lot of conditions on it. But, you know, it's just, in this case, it's, that's not the case. But as far as the maintenance is concerned, is there are now five homes on that road or, and...
But they're not all signatories to this?
Well, the property owners, the, the property owners who put that agreement on, then sold the A2, and then they sold three lots. The three lots, two of...
The three lots are not signatories to this agreement?
They are not, no. They took titles subject to it.
Homeowners are responsible, or lot landlords are responsible for maintaining it.
Well, they, they made anybody taking title to the three lots subject to this agreement, so they are bound by it by just merely owning their, their lot. And if a problem, if a problem arose up there and a lot owner or two lot owners were concerned about it enough and couldn't get 100% agreement, you know, there, there are methods under the common law and the law where they can, you know, force the other...
So there are five people who, who are governed by this?
Correct.
And those five will have to work this out?
Correct.
It's okay with me.
Remove the maintenance requirement in.
Excuse me, we should strike it.
Something here is being struck.
We have a motion to move the amended motion. We have a second on the amended motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's still $26,000?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting us go early.
Okay, we're, we had a Land Court Mylar for 80-man lot road. What are we trying to accomplish here tonight?
I think it's a training exercise.
Yeah, hopefully not. No, I just want to say you're welcome for us coming in early, so you guys can go home early. We could have waited until nine o'clock, but we figured we'd rearrange our schedules to make it easier for you guys. So, so my dinner's waiting for me at Jamie's, but that's okay. No, I'd like to thank Laura for actually arranging it so we could come in. We did get a phone call from Paul Marabito, and he said he wasn't going to be here. So this one's pretty simple. The Form A was signed, and at the time of signing the Form A for 80-man lot road, we had told the board that it was going to go to Land Court. Land Court had to approve the plan under the Land Court regulations and that we would be bringing the Mylar back in. And the Mylar is here. There were very minor changes in the boundary of the property, but it still has all the required frontage, still has the areas, still has all the lot widths, but it's now done to Land Court standards. So they said bring a Mylar in and have it signed, and that's pretty much it.
I thought we sawed it was already done to Land Court standards. Isn't that what you said before?
The property, the original property was a Land Court plan, and then we divided that in the middle. When we divide that in the middle, the Land Court has to approve that plan?
I get that. I thought you said the plan itself was already done to, to those standards.
The plan, the Mylar that is in front of you is done to Land Court standards. The Mylar that you signed before was simply a Form A, which is not done to Land Court standards because you do the Land Court, you do the survey after the planning board approves the plan, approves the, the original Form A plan.
So what's changed?
What's changed is the minor boundary of the property. I have both plans, if you want to go around both plans. What happens is there's, on the original plan, there is...
I don't understand why I'm looking at a different plan after it comes from the Land Court, so that's why I'm asking what's changed.
Okay. The, what happens is on the original Land Court plan, they use math. And this is going to get confusing, okay? But they use math on that plan that's approved by a judge, okay? When we come in to divide the property, we, we showed the same boundary of the exterior of the property with the new property line in the middle that which we created. The new engineers at Land Court take that plan, which I also have here, which was done by Ross Engineering, which showed the original boundary and showed an exact location of all the stone walls with each of the angles in the stone walls that the surveyor felt were necessary to show. He then held the original math on the plan that was on that Land Court plan, and the Land Court engineer had us hold the center line of the stone walls as they exist in the field. So there may have been a dimension that was 166 feet long, but when you actually locate the wall, it might be 40 feet, and then it may change a couple degrees on an angle. So it might be 48 feet plus 120 feet rather than 160 feet. So there are minor changes in the exterior of it, but they had us hold the existing stone walls around the boundary of the property. On the original Land Court plan, it appears as though they held the walls, but that's not exactly where the walls were. So they've now brought it up to a standard that's a higher degree, if that's a good way to look at it. I mean, the biggest discrepancy, I think, was about seven tenths of a foot. So they're, they're kind of on the wall, but not, you know, just the instruments and everything they use now are more accurate than what they had. I think that plan, original plan was done...
So you repeated the survey?
Yeah, we had, we had to do the whole survey all over again to the Land Court standards of today.
And the standards that Morse used were different standards?
No, it wasn't Morse. This was done years and years ago. There was an original Land Court survey.
So those things were different?
Fifty years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. The instruments that they used to do it was a little bit different, and now it's just, it tends to be a little bit more accurate. So they asked us to hold the monuments in the field, which is what we did. But, and my comment was that it's still, the Form A that you're signing still meets all the zoning requirements for the Form A lot. We didn't take 100 feet of frontage, and now it's 99. Everything is still in excess of what it needs to be. The lots actually ended up a little bit bigger than what we started with. And I'd be pleased to show you on the plan after we're done exactly where the changes are, if you wanted to go through them, but it's, I mean...
I just wanted to know why there was a difference. And I think I understand that. So there's, do we need, do we need to do anything at this point?
There's no vote or anything. It's just signing the Mylar.
Okay.
And that's it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Shall we move on? Um, Kelly?
You're going to stay?
No, Kelly? Yes?
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of January 12, 2017.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so approved. The ASL reports, hearing, final report.
Okay. A couple of interesting things going on out there. It's kind of like when they find a new planet, they have a new tributary. And, you know, they, they being, actually, I think this started with the woman who came in, and there was a lot of discussion about the Form A for property on Summer Street, way down towards the Norwell line. And there was initially proposed to be three lots, and then it came back as two lots. Now it has morphed into one lot, but it's not 100% sure where that one lot is going to go because the woman who was here was very convinced that there was some sort of a tributary to the water supply or, you know, whether it was Situates or Norwells. I'm not 100% sure. Cohasset's, I'm not, so it's Cohasset's most likely. So this continued to be an issue with the Conservation Commission and with the Board of Health. And the Conservation Commission got someone from DEP, who's their resident expert on tributaries, to come down, go out in the field with Pat Galvin, Jen Keefe went out, and the surveyors for the applicant. And they all went out, and Bruce Buck said, "Yeah, it's a tributary." So now it has to be mapped, it has to be put on SGIS and so on. And there are all kinds of setbacks from that that come into play. There are zoning setbacks which may come into play. It's, you know, it's really kind of, yeah, it's not quite like a new planet, but it's , it seems like it might be pretty close in terms of the impact that it has.
I mean, to catch you all up. Was this still the piece of land in the West End?
Yeah. This is along Summer Street.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanted to catch you all up on that. And then February 8th, from 7 to 9, right here, is going to be the meeting on the action items and the open space plan. And this would be a good meeting to come to if you're interested in, say, what happens to that MBTA right-of-way south of the Driftway? Do you want to see the trails that we have put on maps so people can kind of find their ways around a little bit better? If there's more land in the West End to buy, would it be a good idea to buy it? Or should we be buying open space somewhere else? Or should we stop buying open space altogether? Where do we need more fields? You know, all of those kinds of things are the kinds of things we're going to be talking about. So it'd be great to have any or all of you...
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, and it's going to be here?
Right here, yeah. Then Steve and I have had a little bit of correspondence with Tricia about a possible personnel change at Town Hall, which would involve creating a planning director. It's a director of planning and development, I think is what she wants to call it. And I don't know, did I send out the job descriptions to you that she sent me?
To you.
Okay, I will send that out.
I think that's what we were going to try to do, send that out along with some background information on some of the, the similar approaches or different approaches around other towns.
Yeah, okay. Okay. It's also something where it's going to be on the agenda probably next time, and Tricia wanted to know if you were interested. wanted to know if you were interested in having that, just to explain it.
Yeah, I left her notes that I'd give her a call once. I'd like to see some of the data you pulled.
Okay.
And then, and then talk to her about it.
Okay.
If you could do that.
Yeah.
I think the other thing was just give an understanding, if you were able to find or put together like a town organization chart.
I did.
As a reporting structure.
I, I did, and I sent that to you, and I'll send that out to everybody. It actually shows there are 23 different entities that report to Tricia.
That's a lot.
I'm with that.
Yeah, I can't even imagine, you know, the, I mean, just doing personnel evaluations for the department heads. There are one or two people on here that, like the Shellfish Constable, I think he reports to the Harbor Master, and the director, I don't know if you knew, we have a director of Situate Cable TV, but he does report directly to Tricia. So it's everything from TV to recreation, to Widow's Walk, to the library, the substance abuse coordinator, I mean, all these people report directly to Tricia, so it's...
So you send that out to everybody as well?
Yeah, yeah, I will do that.
Thanks.
And, and finally, we had gotten a email from, I, well, I had gotten a phone call from Jeff Delisi at Bill Ormberger's office about two projects where he wanted to have informal discussions with the planning board. They were the Toll Brothers development, which, you know, is the proving grounds, the member with that property. It's 55 acres off of Hadley Road. It's a big empty property. They used to be approving grounds.
Okay, yeah.
And there had been some contamination at one, I believe it has been cleaned up, but the neighbors had, you know, some concerns about what was gonna happen there, and what type of development, and so on. And it had been through some stages of like a, kind of like a pre-application here. There had been some review of stormwater, even though they hadn't gotten an application in yet, so...
Well, they haven't been in front of the board yet.
They haven't been in front of the board, and they haven't even applied to be in front of the board. So the idea now is for them to come in and make an informal presentation, pre-application to the planning board, which I think those kinds of meetings are great. I think they're really good for getting information, and it's usually, you know, a pretty nice way to get it, because it's, it can be simpler without all of the public necessarily being there and participating. The downside is that when the public isn't there, they can feel like something happened that they weren't aware of, and this has been a really controversial location. So I don't know what you wanna do, whether you want to go ahead and have this without, you know, public notification. I mean, not, not that there would be no public notification, but...
Well, if you post it on the agenda, it's whether we do a notification of the Butters, right?
But whether you, you actually go out and, you know, notify the Butters to the site, that the planning board is gonna be having this informal discussion with Toll Brothers and their representatives on such and such date, you know, you're welcome to, to, no be limited, you know, public input. I don't know how you say that in a way that people are gonna accept, but, um, maybe you can't, but just to tell people, this is only an informal discussion, this, it does not have anything to do with an actual application that will happen at a later time, give that type of thing. It was done with Stute Farm was one of the more recent, you know, larger developments where we did, when we did 105 Hadley Road, which was a very small development, it was three homes, we, we didn't notify Butters for the informal discussion. But I think the informal discussion there was, you know, you know, maybe it was a completely different type of situation.
We had several informal discussions with Country Way before we ever filed an application.
With the Country Way?
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, yeah. But that, yeah, that was several years ago.
Butters never filed one now?
No. We didn't ever tell Chick Vega or any of those people, 'cause I, yeah, I'm not sure what we did.
That was Chris Ford.
Yeah, yeah.
But then we notified Butters on that?
No. I, I'd have to go and, but, yeah, maybe not.
I don't believe we did.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing without, so if a Butters are not notified, even though it's obviously posted and talked about publicly, right?
Yeah.
Is that anything we talk about is informal and subject to the input during the formal public process, subject to change, so that, you know, people taking sort of the informal meeting as sort of some kind of sign-off or approval would be, would be wrong, right? It's, we're providing input based on the information we have. If it doesn't include the Butters, then obviously, if things come in from the Butters that need to be addressed, then, then we're gonna take that under advisement when it comes in. So I, I think people should be aware, if we don't notify Butters that, or even if we do, that it's still an informal process, right, that it's not a, that it's not a formal hearing, right?
Yeah, I think it would be great to say that when the applicants are here, or when the applicant's representatives, just to be, you know, to be very clear about it, I think would be great.
And there may be, I guess, I'd be interested in you guys' thoughts here, but there may be a threshold where we think, even on an informal side, it'd be worthwhile to, to notify Butters so that, you know, on big projects or something like that, that, that we continue to sort of keep the continuity of public input as we go, but...
Yeah, if I come down on the side of the fact, I don't think there's a need to notify it. Like, you put it out as a meeting, a public meeting, and have it posted as an informal discussion, 'cause I think there's more to be gained by having an informal discussion with the applicant than it is to have the public say, "It's big, it's ugly, and I don't like it," because that's what you're gonna get.
I, I think you're definitely gonna get a piece of that, right? The, the issue is, is we're gonna have that conversation without the benefit of that input potentially, and then, you know, the applicant's gonna come in and present a, an application sort of based on our discussion, and I think the caveat on all of that is, that was then, this is now. If there's more data, more information that's come in, then whatever we said back then is subject to change.
True.
Right? And as long as people are comfortable with that and can, you know, and I think we had that, sort of that conversation with the, the one over on Old Country Way a little bit, right? Started talking about it one way, and then we, we got different kind of sort of input on the next iteration, right? So, you know, I'm, I'm fine for most of them. The only ones I would say doesn't make any sense is whether, whether there's been a series of sort of input already on something like, you know, like the proving grounds, or the Toll Brothers project, and whether we oughta keep that continuity going or not, right? And that's probably something we should discuss, if you will, as a board, to figure out what we wanna do there. And I'd like to have the benefit of Ann and Richard's input as well. But what do you think?
It's all new to me. Yeah, I'm not sure if you wanna make an informal meeting public like that right away, do you?
Well, the informal meeting's definitely public.
I mean, not, not notify Butters right away.
It's just whether the proponent needs to notify Butters or not, is what it comes down to, and, you know, I can see both sides of it, but we still go out of our way to post an agenda to make it public through the, even through this discussion on, on TV, right? So that could be enough for most projects with, with an informal discussion, right?
Yeah. The reason that I, I thought you might wanna really, you know, consider it for this project is, it's a very big project. It's, you know, 50 acres, where it's, you know, 10,000 square foot zone, so it's, you know, it's potentially a lot of units, and it's, you know, it's already had a citizens, citizens group which was organized around it, and, you know, a lot of people that were very, you know, I guess you could say very interested, but concerned, you know, just very, very concerned on what form it was gonna take, and that, you know, there's a history of that in the town as a whole, you know, this particular project, but, yeah, yeah. Could go right away, so, yeah, I'm, you know, just wanting to kind of make sure that you thought about it and it sounds like you have, so...
I would, I would say for, at least to address the smaller project that's been brought up, there's probably no need, at least my view would be there would be no need to, to send out formal public notice for all of that, right? The Toll Brothers project of being assigned, I'd say, but the other one which was reminding...
Anvil Road.
Anvil Road, right. Maybe that one doesn't have the need to, to initially, for an informal hearing, have formal notification of the Butters. What do you guys think?
I think that makes sense to me, but I, I come down to the fact that I think there's more to be gained by an informal discussion that's with the applicant, prior to putting in an application. Once the application is there, then, then very clearly, then the Butters should be notified.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm still on the, on the bigger one. I, I still think there's, there's a lot to be learned on our end, and that has already been learned, not just by the applicant, but But, by the Butters as well. And the sooner we have the benefit of all of that input, I think the better we're gonna be able to address a project like that going forward. So I would probably, on that project, sort of err on the side of notification. That's just my perspective. At this point, we don't need to do anything, right?
Right.
Have we had a request from Toll Brothers?
Oh, well, actually, I should say, right, um, yeah, through, through Jeff, and I think through, you know, the, the conversation we had and the email that he sent you, I, I think they're very much looking to have an informal discussion fairly soon on both of them, and, yeah, but we can maybe, you know, figure out some way to find out what other people are thinking.
Well, I would say we could proceed with Ann's file.
Yeah.
My recommendation is we get Ann and Richard's input as well on the Toll Brothers discussion.
You have a question or a comment?
Well, yes, thank you, George. My case, and again, I'm a member of Ormberger's firm, and I know the, the reason they were hoping to get both moving is that they are very, it's tiny. It's not any lack of desire to keep anything from, from Butters, but they wanna get that project moving right away and...
More than welcome to do it. I mean, if they provide notification to the Butters on the bigger project, it's two weeks, right? And, and it hasn't been us holding anything up, so...
No.
So I would say if that's, if that's the standard we decide to adopt for the bigger project, then I'm, I'm happy to address the smaller project without formal notification, but...
I would just, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's, that's enough.
Anything else?
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
I'm not entertaining that motion. I'm gonna entertain Reggie's motion.
No, it's like Reggie's motion.
Al is in favor. We're through.